From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting, originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue, Bakersfield, California. Kern County's vision is to create and maintain a customer-centered county government designed to garner the confidence, support, and trust of the people we serve. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Board to reconvene, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Supervisor Gleason.
Here.
Supervisor Scrivener.
Here.
Supervisor Maggard.
Here.
Supervisor Couch.
Here.
Supervisor Perez.
Here.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Tuesday, April 4, 2017, meeting of the Kern County Board of Supervisors. We're going to begin today's meeting with the flag salute, and that's going to be led by Bakersfield Mayor Karen Go. I'll ask Karen to come forward, and if you could please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation. Please stand.
Please join me in honoring the flag of our great nation. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. All right, if you'd like to follow along with our agendas, they are located on the two tables in the back, near the doors. We're going to begin today with our consent agenda. All items listed with a C-A above the item are considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion. If a member of the audience wishes to comment or ask questions regarding any items on the consent agenda, they may do so prior to the vote being taken on the consent agenda. A member of the board may remove any item from the consent agenda, and it will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board concerning the item before action is taken. And so at this time, I'm going to read the consent agenda, starting on page two. Items six and seven are on consent. On page three, all items 10 through 17 are on consent. On page four, items 19 and 20, as well as 23 and 24, are on consent. On page five, all items 25 through 31 are on consent. On page six, items 32 through 39 are all on consent. And so I'd ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make any comments on the consent agenda. Mr. Fox, do you want to come forward? I think you, the clerk notified me that you would like to make a comment. Is it regarding item 23?
Twenty-three.
Okay, please come forward, and I would ask you to state your name.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Dennis Fox. We have a lot of dead trees up there in the forest that are going to burn, and with all the rain, we're getting a lot of flash fuels. What I'd like to do is give you what other counties, I've got some stuff from other counties, what they're doing, and it might be appropriate to, instead of reinventing wheels, see what they're up to. And I'd like to give it to one of the things that I saw, I've seen seems very, very interesting, and it's up to you, as not the fire department do, that it was in Tahoe area. The houses burned and the people rather did not want to move back, so they donated the lot, and they made it into a firewise plantings for the area to cut down the hazard. And some of the counties are doing it, and it seems cost-effective. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Appreciate it. Are there any other comments on the consent agenda from members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'll return to the board for any comments or to remove an item or for a motion.
Motion on consent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Thank you very much. And now we'll return to page two on our agenda. Item one, under Resolutions and Proclamations. This is a resolution honoring Robert Ante, Employers Training Resource, upon his retirement with 31 years of dedicated service to the county of Kern, and Supervisor Couch will make this presentation.
Motion on the proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
It's my honor today to present this proclamation to, excuse me, this resolution to Robert Ante. And I'm going to read it, I'm going to turn it over to Teresa Hitchcock, she's got a few words, and she's going to introduce some, two other folks to us. One of them is Robert. This is again, a resolution honoring and commending Robert Ante upon his retirement with 31 years of dedicated service to Kern County. And it reads, "Whereas, Robert Ante began his career at the county of Kern as an extra-help counseling technician in the Client Services Department of Employers Training Resource on January 13, 1986. And Mr. Ante accepted a permanent position on June 23, 1986, and on June 20, 1987, he was promoted to Counseling Technician Two. His position was reclassified to Program Specialist Two on July 13 of 2002, and he continued in that capacity until his retirement. During his tenure, spanning more than three decades, Robert Ante's various duties have included the determination of clients' eligibility for services, assisting clients with computer-based reading and math skills, administering the general aptitude test battery, case management, facilitator of the process management team, and assigning work key scores in reading, math, and locating information to vocational training programs to ensure customers' suitability for employment in specific industries. And throughout his career, he has been an exceptional employee who has exhibited a strong work ethic. He has earned the respect and admiration of his peers and colleagues, as well as the clients that he served. Mr. Ante's dedication and commitment to the Employers Training Resource and the county of Kern are very, very much appreciated, and he has wished all the best in his future endeavors. Now, therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Supervisors, the county of Kern, and state of California, does hereby honor and commend Robert Ante upon his retirement with 31 years of dedicated service to Kern County. It's stated today, April 4, 2017, signed by all the members of the Board of Supervisors." And I want to turn it over to Teresa Hitchcock to say a couple of words.
Thank you Supervisor Couch. Good morning, Chairman Scrivener, members of the board. It's always truly a privilege and an honor to recognize people who have given most of their life to public service. I was taking a look at some of the things that Robert's done over the years. He's literally helped thousands of people either find that first job, or become re-employed, or get training so that they can raise the prospects for their family's economic futures. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to my Deputy Director over Client Services. He's the Division Chief over Robert's area, and he's going to say a few more words directly about Robert.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. I'm Aaron Ellis, Deputy Director for the Client Services Division. I've had the pleasure of working with Robert Ante since 1992, when I started with ETR, and he's a phenomenal employee. I want to mention about his case management duties. He actually case managed several training programs, such as Barber, Bakersfield Barber College, Cal State University-Bakersfield Training Programs, and many others. And he treated all of his customers with respect. He helped them through the hard times of getting through a training program and getting employment, so I just want to thank him for all the years that he worked for ETR. We're going to miss him, but other staff have learned from him too. So his skills, his abilities will move on with our other staff with ETR. Thank you.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors and Employers Training Resource for this recognition of my 31 years in the area of employment counseling to the citizens of Kern County. I'm deeply honored and appreciative. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Now we'll move on to item number two on our agenda. This is a proclamation to proclaim April 2017 as Donate Life Awareness Month in Kern County, and Supervisor Maggard will make this presentation.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Friends, I am here this morning to help us proclaim the month of April as Donate Life Awareness Month in Kern County. The next time you pull your wallet out of your purse or your pocket, I want you to look at it and see if this little pink dot is on it. Because if that little pink dot is on it, you can make the difference in saving up to eight people's lives with your organ donation, or up to 50 people's lives are enhanced if you do a tissue donation. You will never know the difference, but they will know all the difference. And I just encourage you to reflect upon whether or not that's something you can do. It's very easy. You can make a tremendous difference in somebody's life. This happens all over the country every year. It's amazing to me, sad to me, tragic to me, that every day, about 79 organ transplants take place in the country, but every day, 22 people pass away, waiting for their organ transplant to come that never arrives. So that little pink dot can make all the difference. I am joined here by Aaron Markovitz from One Legacy, Tom Sito, who's the Vice President of Info Technology for One Legacy, and by Dave Teasdale, who's going to actually say something, I think, here in a moment. And I'm also joined by Lori Malkin from JJ's Legacy, who I think is going to say something as I have two proclamations to hand out, and Greg Galian is here as well, who you know does a great job for us with Houghton Blood Bank, but he's on the board of JJ's Legacy here, and that's why he says so. Would you guys step up close to me here? Come on up. So this first one is a proclamation by the Board of Supervisors, the county of Kern, state of California, officially proclaiming April 2017 as Donate Life Awareness Month in Kern County, entered into our minutes, evidenced by the signature of our Chairman and the Honorable Zach Scrivener. And this is the fourth day of April 2017. So this first one is, I think they're the same, actually. Yeah, here we go. So this first one is for JJ's Legacy, and the second one is for One Legacy. And what I'd like to do is have, I think, Mr. Teasdale, you say something first. He has a compelling story about what can happen when people make this decision, and then we'd like to hear from you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Maggard. Thank you, Chairman and the board, for the opportunity to speak briefly about this proclamation. I'm so grateful that you are bringing awareness to organ donation. I have a daughter who is a two-time recipient, and she's been given the gift of life, and I've firsthand seen the change it can have on a family. And it is such a tremendous gift to give to another family when you do make that choice to donate. So thank you for the opportunity to raise awareness about the need for organ donation within our community. Thanks.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors, and thank you, Mr. Maggard, for having us here today. I'm Lori Malkin with JJ's Legacy, and I am the founder, and we started JJ's Legacy in 2010, after the traumatic loss of my son, Jeffrey Johns. And he was able to give life to five people through organ donation and enhance 50 lives through tissue. So it's been my mission and JJ's Legacy mission to bring awareness and to educate and to inspire our community in Kern County and in California to have a pink dot on your driver's license. So thank you so much, and we appreciate all of your support in Kern County. Thanks.
Let's stand together and picture right here.
Wait, is he in?
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda, item number three, is to proclaim April 9 through 15, 2017, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Kern County, and Supervisor Gleason will make this presentation.
Motion on proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
Appreciate it. It's an honor to be here to proclaim April 9 to 15, 2017, as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Kern County. Unsung heroes who work behind the scenes to make things work at critical moments in people's lives. You know, the three-digit 911 emergency number first came into use in 1968, when AT&amp;T filed the establishment of 911 as the emergency code throughout the United States. Since then, public education and strategic campaigns have led to the success of the emergency communication system. When faced with answering a 911 call, public safety dispatchers are required to make lifesaving decisions in a matter of seconds to receive and dispatch calls within the 8,000 square foot, square miles of Kern County. The Kern County Fire Department's Emergency Communications Center, the ECC, is held to high standards by demanding emergency medical and fire dispatch certification through the International Academies of Emergency Dispatch. Since 2002, it has been reaccredited through 2018. ECC receives transferred calls from 17 different law enforcement agencies and relay calls to three different private ambulance companies. In 2016, the total volume call, call volume for service, was 394,170 calls. Wow. It's an honor to be here. It's an honor to recognize these unsung heroes and to thank them for the work they do at the critical moments when people are in most desperate need, and I think the chief has something he wants to talk about. Chief?
Congratulations. That's for you. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is really an honor to do this. Through my near 30 years of service in the, working for the fire department, I've really come to appreciate what dispatchers do. And the last eight years, I've been directly over our fire dispatch center, and I really came to know them a lot better on what they do and how they do it. And I guess the easiest way to sum it up is that most people, hopefully, never have to dial 911, but if you do, those that do only have to do it maybe once or twice in their lifetime. It's very traumatic, it's typically very frightening, it's a terrible phone call to have to make, usually. And our dispatchers, regardless of the service that they're with, they're receiving those phone calls all day, every day, for their entire career. It's an extremely stressful profession. We really, it's an honor to have the opportunity to appreciate really what they do, because mentioning that they're unsung heroes is really very true. They're behind the scenes, and everything happens because of what they do. So can I inter?
Yeah, please.
Sheriff? Sheriff?
Thank you, Mike. When you talk about unsung heroes, these really are the people in our organization that get the least amount of recognition and do the hardest job. You've heard me stand up here and talk about how difficult it is to recruit and retain deputy sheriffs in this county. I can tell you that I've been around here for 40 years, and this position is the hardest position for the last 40 years to fill and retain, because it takes special people to be able to do this. If you can imagine that 911 call that comes in where someone is absolutely hysterical, I've been there, and it's very difficult even to understand what they're trying to say. And these folks are able to calm them down and get the most information they can so they can relay it to the field. And I can tell you, I couldn't be any prouder of a group of employees in the sheriff's office than these dispatchers right over here, because they really are the backbone of our organization. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is extremely important recognition for a very difficult job. Thank you so much. And finally, we, on our agenda, we have, we're going to have two items presented by Supervisor Perez. First item number four is to proclaim April 2017 as Sikh Appreciation Month in Kern County, and item five is to proclaim April 2017 as the Great American Cleanup Month in Kern County. And so Supervisor Perez, we'll ask you for a motion on both items.
Thank you, Chairman. Proclamation on items four and five, please, or vote on proclamation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all eyes.
I am truly honored today to join you and this county in proclaiming April 2017 as Sikh Appreciation Month in Kern County. Sikhism is a monotheistic religion founded in Punjab, India during the 15th century, and it is the fifth-largest religion in the world. Sikhs believe in and practice tolerance and acceptance, respecting diversity and all faiths. About 250,000 Sikhs live in California, with 30,000 right here in our beloved Kern County. Sikh Americans pursue diverse professions and walks of life, making up the social, cultural, and economic fabric of Kern County and the United States. Many local Sikhs are immigrants from the rural Punjab region of India, because our valley shares an agricultural similarity with Punjab. In addition to agriculture, many Sikh Americans have made successful careers in the fields of medicine, law, technology, and transportation. This month, we take the time to celebrate the contributions made by Sikhs in our community and also raise awareness regarding the beautiful Sikh faith. Together, we can promote understanding, open-mindedness, and appreciation for the contributions and shared experiences of Sikh Americans here in Kern County and throughout our nation. Today, we proclaim the Board of Supervisors, County of Kern, state of California, officially April 2017 as Sikh Appreciation Month in Kern County, and this recognition has been entered into the official board minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Mr. Zach Scrivener. I would like to say, Mr. Chairman, I have had the tremendous privilege of becoming great friends and partners with many Sikhs in my district and beyond, and I consider it a great honor that I'm able to make this presentation today. We know that community is very diverse. We know there are beautiful families and great Americans that contribute significantly to the economy here in Kern and beyond. So thank you for the privilege, Mr. Chairman. I stand here today with Nazir Kuner and our very own GK. I know they have some things to share, some enlightenment to provide us with. So, thank you. The floor is yours, Nazir.
Good morning, Mr. Kuner.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Honorable Supervisors. Last 35 years, we had so much support from Board of Supervisors. We were like strangers. 35 years ago, you guys brought us in, in a public line. Mayor Harvey Hall contributed a lot. You guys did a great job. Now we don't feel strangers anymore. We are in Mill Creek Park every day. 300 needy people come, hug us, and eat food with us. Every credit goes to you. I, when I was a child, I was listening, there is a paradise on this earth. When I was immigrated to the US, I saw that with my eyes. 37 years, we are living in paradise. No more respect we can get here, and no more protection we can get here without your support. Honorable Chairman, we are so much grateful, and I kindly invite you to join us with Peace Walk on April 16 in Sister City Garden. Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Kuner.
Honorable Board members, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Perez, thank you so much for this. I'm only hoping my community is hard at work somewhere, and we really want to appreciate and articulate our thanks for this proclamation. This is a challenging time for the Sikh community in many respects. Hate crimes have been committed against the Sikh community, none here in Bakersfield, thankfully, and in Kern County, because I think that speaks volumes to the leadership of this board and to the city of Bakersfield. As Nazir said, we've been integrated into this community for over 35 years. We've stood shoulder to shoulder, walked hand in hand with all the members of this community, and we value that experience. And so this proclamation is incredibly important to us. This is a monumental month for Sikhs. It is the time of our Bisaki celebration, our renewal. There are going to be many programs going on around Bakersfield and other parts of Kern County, various goodwars, so I invite you to become a part of those. As Nazir said, there will be a parade on the 16th of April. We invite you to participate in that, and encourage all members of this community to join with us. We've been here, we love this community. I'm personally very grateful to be able to serve this community directly in my capacity, so it's a very great honor for us to be here before you today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, GK.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor, very much. Thank you. Okay, Great American Cleanup, come on down. Look at you, stranger. Hello. Good to see you. Bob LaRue looks the happiest I've ever seen him. How interesting. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. We have with us today Bob LaRue and our mayor, Karen Go. Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Community, Vice Chair is Bob, excellent, and former director of Kern County Parks and Recreation. Good morning, Chairman Scrivener, members of the board. I am excited to join our guests as we proclaim April 2017 as Great American Cleanup Month in Kern County. The Keep America Beautiful Great American Cleanup is the largest community improvement program in the United States, engaging millions of volunteers and participants every year to create positive change and lasting impact in our communities. Right here in Kern County, we have had thousands of volunteers participate each year in our event locally. Individuals and community groups working with cities and the county will conduct cleanups, plant trees and flowers, remove graffiti, collect bulky waste and e-waste items, to help clean and beautify their communities throughout Kern County. On behalf of the entire board, we commend all of the volunteers to take part in this event each year. Who take part in this event? Chairman and members of the board, I would like to say that it has been a wonderful opportunity to take children from the Sheriff's Activities League, kids from throughout Lamont, Arvin, we gather on this day, as we will this year, and clean up parts of East Bakersfield, the 5th District. It really has been a great impetus to get a lot of work done in a very short period of time, and the momentum, the energy truly is remarkable, and one of the great highlights of this county and of the year. So thank you for the opportunity to proclaim to the, for the Board of Supervisors, County of Kern. April 2017 is Great American Cleanup Month in Kern County. This recognition, of course, has been entered into the minutes and signed by our Honorable Chairman, Mr. Zach Scrivener. And the floor is yours. Mayor Go?
Thank you. Very much.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you so much for this proclamation. We appreciate your uniting with us.
Good morning, members of the board, Chairman. Got a few things. Supervisor Perez actually covered a few of them, so hopefully I won't be redundant here, but the event is Saturday, April 22nd. We start about 8:00 in the morning, all over the city, and I know the county has participated in county areas as well. In fact, Aurora Rush with Waste Management usually heads up the county's team. Then we actually have the ceremony starts at 11:00 a.m. It'll be at Yocatz Park, and we have many of the state, as well as the federal and local officials there. Many of them bring proclamations or say a few words. Couple of things that I might mention to you that maybe are a little bit not known as well as they should be. One of the things that Keep Bakersfield Beautiful does is work with the homeless center, and we have actually homeless crews working with Caltrans, and we have them working on the freeways of 99, 58, 178. And we do that on a weekly basis. We've got three crews out there actually doing cleanups out there because we felt that we can do cleanups throughout the wards of Bakersfield, but if we aren't doing the freeways where people are driving through, then they're seeing all that, so we want to help clean up those areas. The good thing about that, we've actually had some of the homeless people, actually are not homeless anymore because they've made enough money actually working on the crews, or they've actually been hired by various organizations, so they're able to make some money. And we also abate graffiti. We have murals done, a lot of the murals downtown in electrical boxes. We just had a recent mural done down at Wool Growers, if you've got to see that, the Basque mural. We also have a big project going with Old Town Kern, working with the city of Bakersfield to actually improve that area on the sidewalks, lighting, landscape area, as well as some murals in that area. The other thing that we know, and we knew this through Texas, the phrase "Don't mess with Texas" was put into place, and everybody's aware of that, but really, that was because of cleanup. And they couldn't make a difference with the cleanup. They had all the cleanup programs, they had the enforcement side, until they got education going. So, we started the education program a few years ago in the elementary schools, and we provided a presentation to the youth at elementary schools, and it took Texas about 10 years before they saw that culture start to change. So, we've got that in the schools now, and we think that'll make a difference. So, finally, I'd like to thank you for actually the proclamation and welcome you to Saturday, April 22nd, the Great American Cleanup. Please come and participate if you can, or at least come to the ceremony where we recognize a lot of the volunteers that have done great work throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRude and Mayor Go, and to everyone on the Keep Bakersfield Beautiful Committee and all the volunteers that'll be out there on the 22nd. Thanks so much. Good to see you, Bob. Okay, next item on our agenda will be public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board on any matter, not on this agenda, but under the jurisdiction of the board. Board members may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed. If you'd like to make a public statement, please come forward. We ask that you state your name and observe our two-minute time limit. Okay? I don't see anyone who... Oh, here we go. Come forward, please. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Mona Sidhu, S-I-D-H-U. I'm here to talk about Sikh Appreciation Month, which has just been declared, and I think it's important to recognize that Sikhs who are living in this county have made great progress in the last 40 years since my family arrived, and we were just a handful of people here, to now where we have five temples and a large and diverse community. Most Sikhs in this area are first-generation because of laws that prevented us from coming for many, many decades, laws that prevented us from becoming citizens, laws that revoked citizenship of those who had become citizens, that took away our land. And so, proper immigration basically began in earnest since 1965 and was a result of the Civil Rights Movement that led to many race-based laws being changed. So, as a Sikh, I would like to show appreciation to the other minority communities in America who fought hard for equal rights that benefited us eventually and allowed us to come here. We did not come here just on our own. We had the help and support of many other communities to bring about those changes in the laws, so I would like to extend my appreciation to them. I would also like to address one issue that I've been bringing up with the board over the last several weeks. I understand that the Human Relations Commission has on their agenda today, for their meeting today, the proposed changes to the structure of the body, and I hope that once it's presented to the board, there will be swift action on it. Because just to make a small correction on what was said earlier, there have been hate crimes in this area. There was a very well-publicized prosecution, in fact, last fall, but besides that, there has been a rise of incidents. There may not have been prosecutions because people can't be identified sometimes, and there are other complications, but there has been a rise even here in incidents and attacks. And so, I would urge the board to, when that, when the changes to the Human Relations Commission are presented, to move on it as swiftly as possible so that we can get going on, coming up with some policies to deal with the hate crimes in this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sidhu. Would anyone else like to make a public presentation? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move on to board member announcements or reports. Okay, we don't have any of those, and so, we're gonna move on then to item 18 on our agenda. This is an item under County Council. It's Public Hearing Regarding Adoption of Urgency Ordinance Extending Moratorium on the Establishment of New Medical Marijuana Dispensaries and the Relocation of Existing Dispensaries. And so, I'll ask County Council Mark Nations to start us off. Good morning, Mr. Nations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This matters before you today for purposes of extending for one year the moratorium on new medical marijuana dispensaries and the relocation of existing dispensaries. Moratorium has been in place since May 10, 2016. I have provided your board and the public with a detailed board letter and don't want to repeat everything that I've put in there. We are on track with our effort to get an EIR prepared. We should have that completed, I believe, by June. I think Craig Murphy is here to answer any questions on the timetable, if you have any. However, the purpose of the moratorium is to maintain the status quo that existed as of May 10, 2016, so that we can finish our environmental impact review, get our regulatory scheme in place, so that it can be presented to your board for a vote in the fall. It is imperative that we have something in place prior to January, so the public and the state knows, know what our regulations will be here locally. So, I'm prepared to answer any questions that you may have, should you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. I'll now open the public hearing and ask if there are any comments on this item. Okay, please come forward. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Patricia Leal, last name L-E-A-L, and I work as a policy advocate with Leadership Council. And the reason I'm here today is because we work with communities in Rexland Acres, Lamont, Arvin, Weed Patch, and some of the concerns that have come up is in regards to the marijuana dispensaries. There has been an increase in marijuana dispensaries in Rexland Acres. There are currently four to five dispensaries operating, and the main concerns of the community members are that they feel unsafe walking through their community. There's been an increase of usage in youth in regards to marijuana itself, and I think, I'm just here, I know a lot of them, excuse me, a lot of the residents are working right now, so they can't be here present today. So, I would just like to comment on behalf of them that if there's any adoption, that we take into account that community members are concerned of marijuana dispensaries operating in their community, and we've called code enforcement to see what they can do and follow the regulations, but it seems that nothing has been occurring in regards to that. So, please do take into account community members' concern. I am aware that there's an EIR going on, and we did submit comments based on, based on the notice of the NOR, and I have here a copy for you if it's possible to submit it. But, thank you, and I hope these comments are taken into account.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Leal.
Chairman, I have a question.
Absolutely. Supervisor Perez.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
Thank you for being here and for the work that you do in Greenfield. Did you say there are four to five new dispensaries in the Greenfield area?
In the Rexland Acres area.
Rexland Acres, okay.
Yeah, Rexland Acres, which is adjacent to unincorporated Greenfield.
Okay. Thank you for that information. Do you have data, or?
I do have it.
How do you know that increase, there's been an increase in youth usage, and did you provide that in your comments?
I, the reason I say it is because of comments from community members themselves. They've seen them. I have the records of the dispensaries that have been opened. How do I know this? I called code enforcement, and they didn't have it in the database, so that means they were open after they went and did those checkups. And the usage, it's been from comments from the community itself.
Okay. Okay. And you included that in your comments to the planning department?
I did, I did include those in the letter, yeah.
Very good.
And if you have any other questions, feel free to reach out. I can give you my information after.
The purpose of today's request is to see if this board will continue the moratorium, to continue saying new medical marijuana dispensaries are not legal until we work through a whole host of regulatory problems. So, that is the purpose of today. It's a little bit confusing the way it...
It was worded.
Right, so I apologize for that. But, the purpose of today and the request of this board is to say, will we extend that moratorium, so that the new ones you're referencing are not legal, and other issues can be worked out, and the board can make a final determination at the conclusion of that regulatory process?
Yes.
So, just so you're, just so you know. But, thank you for your work, and I appreciate you being here today.
Thank you, and I know it mentions also in regards to relocation. Can you further explain how would that apply to this?
Mr. Nations, could you give some clarity there, please?
What that means is if the, if a marijuana dispensary, even if it was open as of May 10, 2016, but after the moratorium was established, it decided to relocate, that would be a prohibited act.
Okay. And I believe those are some issues that are occurring in Rexland Acres as well, and that's some, there's been some issues in regards to code enforcement, being able to do something in regards to that because they do relocate. So, something else to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Nations, there is a lot of frustration by members of the community and frankly, some skepticism about our moratorium and the efforts that we've put in, and it isn't for lack of effort on our part, but could you just explain to the public a little bit about why, from your experience, there has been such an increase in the incidence of these dispensaries and why our efforts have been a bit slowed down, been curtailed a bit?
Mr. Maggard, through the chair. I guess there's several factors at work here. First, the state, of course, has adopted a regulatory scheme that legalizes commercial recreational marijuana. That has led people to believe that it is now okay to open these businesses and sell marijuana. That is not the case. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding out there. We do, after code enforcement has identified a dispensary as having opened after the moratorium, we do seek court remedies against those businesses. What we have found is that the court system has been very slow to respond. We have filed lawsuits against a number of them. We have sought injunctive relief. The courts have been reluctant to issue injunctions against them. And so, it's a combination of not having any criminal penalties available to us, and the civil process is much slower than the criminal process in many respects. And so, we have a number of litigation matters pending against existing dispensaries, and we are hoping that the courts will empower us to enjoin the opening of additional dispensaries. I would note that of the 19 that have attempted to open since the imposition of the moratorium, half of those opened in the month of February. So, we have not actually gotten to many of them yet because code enforcement has yet to complete their investigations, and we have not initiated the legal process against them. Thank you.
Mr. Nations, I'd like to follow up on one thing you said that I think is, I don't know how to go about doing this, and I want to do it respectfully, but I believe what you said was the courts have elected not to enforce our injunctions. Is that a fair characterization of what you said?
I would say that thus far, they have not been willing to issue them. I'm not going, I'm not certainly going to predict that they won't issue them in the future, but thus far, we have not been successful.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. The thing I'd like to implore the courts to do is to take this matter, move it up on whatever priority list there is inside the courts, because the quality of life in our neighborhoods, the people that we represent, the day-to-day life of children who have to walk in front of them, businesses who are located next to them, and sometimes residences that are located next to them, the quality of their life is being compromised every day, and every day the court delays taking action is another day that the quality of people's lives are suffering. So, I just urge the courts to become more engaged and to move forward with helping us solve this problem until we find a final solution. Thank you, Mr. Nations.
Thank you, Supervisor Maggard. Mr. Nations, you said something that some members of the public, I think, have some confusion about, and that was that there is no, there's no criminal process for us to pursue, and so, we have to pursue this civilly. And so, if we have this moratorium in place, if these dispensaries open, then they are illegal. Is that true?
That's correct.
And so, why is there no criminal process available to us?
Well, violation of a county ordinance is, in fact, a misdemeanor. It has always been a misdemeanor, but I think the district attorney's office is not in a position to pursue charges against, for what amounts to a code violation.
Thank you, Mr. Nations. Supervisor Maggard.
Thank you, Chairman Skrivner. Back in our city council days, we developed a strategy that would prosecute graffiti crimes as a quality of life issue, and there was a detail of the city attorney's office who was designated to specifically pursue that course of action. I'd like us to explore if there's any opportunity for that. I don't know if it means that we must do it with the cooperation of the DA, and if so, I'd ask the DA to help us in that regard, but that strategy was pretty effective. I'd like to see if there might be a way that we might be able to do the same thing here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I believe that they, we used administrative penalties in that case with that, with the community prosecutor program through the city attorney's office. So, Mr. Nations, could you, I'd like to echo Supervisor Maggard's interest in looking at that as a possibility.
We will.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments? Members of the public, one last opportunity? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and return to the board. The, for a motion on staff's recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved. All eyes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, we'll move on to item 21. This item is under the Fire Department. This is Proposed Retroactive Professional Services Agreement with Kronos Inc. containing non-standard terms and conditions for telestaff software from May 1, 2016 through April 30, 2019, in an amount not to exceed $100,000. And we have our, a couple of our deputy chiefs here, Chief Moon and Marshall. So, which one of you fellows are gonna start us off?
Supervisor, supervisor, or Chairman Skrivner, it'll be me, Mike Miller. This is a request for a renewal of a maintenance agreement for the software that we utilize to manage our staffing and also utilize in payroll. We've been doing so since about 2002. There are some non-standard terms. It was recommended that it be approved, and I defer to counsel for the specifics of the non-standard terms.
Supervisor, Chairman Scribner. It'll be me, Mike Miller. This is a request for a renewal of a maintenance agreement for the software that we utilize to manage our staffing and also utilize in payroll. We've been doing so since about 2002. There are some non-standard terms. It was recommended that it be approved. And I defer to council for the specifics of the non-standard terms.
Okay. Thank you, Chief Miller. Mr. Nations, would you like to make any comments on this?
Sure. This happens from time to time. This is an agreement that provides for software that is critical to the function of the Fire Department. But the provider insisted on modifying 10 different clauses in our master agreement that we have for these sorts of things. This is not uncommon. Because of the number of changes, we opted... We didn't feel we could approve the agreement as to form. We certainly do not oppose approval of the agreement because of the necessity. But we thought it should not remain on consent given the number of changes insisted upon by the provider.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nations. I'll ask if there are any members of the audience that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, I return to the Board.
Motion on staff's recommendation.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. And also under the Fire Department, Item 22. This is a public hearing to consider proposed amendment to Kern County Ordinance Code, Chapter 8.46, to clarify hazardous growths, increase abatement time, and increase administrative penalty.
Chairman Scribner, Chief Miller, again, I'd like to defer to Chief Moon, who runs that portion of our operation, to further clarify what the changes to that ordinance are that are recommended.
Thank you. Good morning, Chief Moon.
Good morning, Supervisor Scribner, Chair Scribner through the Board. I would like to just point out a few things of this ordinance. It's minor changes that we've made to try and improve our defensible space, our compliance. We found in other agencies, they've had an increase in compliance with increased fees for the enforcement portion of this. Over the last five years, our compliance has been at about 589 properties per year that we are out of compliance, and we are issuing citations. So, this weed and other hazardous growth ordinance is to increase defensible space and the compliance of it. We're trying to identify the responsible parties more carefully. And with our order to abate, we have increased it from seven days to 15 days for a better opportunity to abate the hazard. The fine increase is from $250 to $500 for the first offense. And if there was additional offenses after that, the fine would be increased from $500 to $1,000. We are planning to put out quite a bit of public information on this to make sure that people are aware of it, making our website at kerncountyfire.org available with information, increased fines or signs at the fire stations to make it known in the public, as well as press releases. And we're putting on fire and wildlife, wildfire expos. We'll have on April 22, Lake Isabella, April 29 in Tehachapi, and May 13 in Pine Mountain Club area to try and get the message out to increase compliance, which is our main goal, is education and compliance for defensible space. With that, I'd like to recommend that the Board open a hearing and receive a public comment to close the hearing, make findings if project that is exempt further from CEQA review pursuant to Sections 15061B and 15321 of the state CEQA guidelines, waive the reading and enact the proposed ordinance and refer implementation to the Fire Department. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Chief Moon. I'll now open the public hearing and ask if there are any members of the public that would like to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. I return to the Board. I'd just like to say that when you observe one of these wildland fires that we have in that urban interface with the wildland area and you see those properties that have created that defensible space and everything around them has burned and their property remains untouched, you can see the striking importance of creating this defensible space barrier around a property. So, thank you. Any comments by members of the Board or all request a motion?
Motion on staff's recommendation. Thank you, gentlemen.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, all ayes.
Thank you. That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this morning. We do have some items to consider in closed sessions. First, Items 40 and 41 under the County Administrative Office and Items 42, 43, and 44 under County Council. And so, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the closed session.
So moved.
Okay, we are adjourned.